Go ahead and call the meeting to order. We're gonna start with the invocation and the pledge. I want to join in. Pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank for allowing together here. We pray your blessings on the decisions we make tonight. Pray that you'll be with each of us as we travel home. Guide us safely in Jesus' name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Is there anyone that would like for me to read the meeting procedures? We're good with that. We'll move on. We're gonna push the election of officers to the end of the meeting. So we'll go into approving the minutes from the last meeting. They're here. Motion to approve the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second. And a second. All those in favor? We've got our first on the public hearing, CUP dash twenty-four dash ten. Hundred and eighth East Twenty-first Street, Sea Island, conditional use permit. Consideration of request for a conditional use permit for native landscaping seaward of development setback land. Property is located at one oh east, one oh eight East Twenty-first Street, Sea Island, parcel zero five dash zero one three five nine, and is a one-family residential, R twelve and R nine. Daniel Boosie, Resource and Land Consultants, LLC, agent for Twenty-first Street Partners LLC, owner.
And sorry to interrupt. We got there quick, but I will have to recuse myself from this one as it is my project.
Mine as well.
Okay.
Do we need to leave?
Did we need to go?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could step off and you can sit in the audience while we do this application. So, good evening, Commissioners. Stephanie Leaf, Planning and Zoning Director. So for our new Commissioners, these applications come before the Island's Planning Commission when property is located along the ocean and they want to do any kind of improvements or landscaping seaward of a development setback line. The development setback line is set forth in the Beach and Dune Protection Ordinance in the zoning code, and that line is determined based on what the Department of, State Department of Natural Resources also looks at. So we really look what the DNR has indicated as the Shore Protection Act line, and that correlates with what our ordinance says is the development setback line. So when, when anyone does want to do, sometimes we see a pool or patio decking, in this case is native landscaping, anything like that, that's seaward of that line is what requires a conditional use permit. And you all will look at this and then it's a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. And one of, and the criteria for, for these, for these properties to get their DNR permitting, they do have to have a zoning letter that's issued by the county that states that there's no zoning violations. And so the county can only issue that letter when a conditional use permit has been approved. So this is kind of their first step in finishing their DNR state permitting to, to do what they're looking to do on the property. So this property is on Sea Island on Twenty-first Street. And where the star is located is the property. So just orient you, the ocean is on the right-hand side of the screen. And there's a houses under construction there now, and so this is, this is the survey of the property. And then this is what they're showing is their, their plan for the new structure, and then this is where they're showing the native landscaping. So this red line here is the Shore Protection Act line, and what this measures is twenty-five feet back from the most landward toe of the dune. So this arrow is where, this is twenty-five foot area. And so they are proposing just native landscaping in this area. And these are your possible motions. And Mr. Dan Boosie is here. If you'd have any questions for him or would like additional details about the project, and I can answer questions as well. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff? Is the applicant here?
Good evening. I'm Dan Boosie, agent for the applicant. And just to explain quickly, we start these projects by delineating the shore protection jurisdiction line, which coincides with the county ordinance. So the line is set at the landward toe of the dune, and you add twenty-five feet to that. So that's the area that we're proposing to alter the landscaping, existing to what we're proposing. And no hardscapes in this project, strictly landscaping. So there's a mixture of pass phalen lawn, which is a native grass, and some dune plantings that'll be going in that area. So it'll look similar to what's there, but, but nicer, more, more taken care of, if you will. This is pretty standard procedure, and as Stephanie explained, once we get your approval, then go to the Board of Commissioners. Then she'll provide us with a letter that we need to then submit state permit through the Georgia DNR to the Shore Protection Committee for their, their approval before we can conduct any work. And the final landscaping plan is submitted prior to construction. It'll be approved by the Shore Protection Committee with a special condition that we submit that for their final approval at staff level prior to initiating any installation. Any questions? I'll be glad to answer. Yes, ma'am.
This might be for Stephanie. I'm not sure. Are there any other residences in the area that have applied for a similar conditional use as this?
There, many.
Many?
Yeah. I can't even recall how many I've done in my career, twenty-eight years. So it's very common.
Okay, thank you.
And then the, the state law, so you know, altering the landscaping or topography in any way requires a permit from them, which requires that we, you know, start off with the all because your beach and dune ordinance is very similar.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And this is a public hearing item, Mr. Chairman, so you can open up the public hearing and see if there's any comments.
Are there any, anyone that wants to speak on behalf of the applicant that's for the project? Anyone that's against the project? Close the public hearing then. Any discussion?
You can actually even, to answer your question, I went and looked at it yesterday. And if you look at the sightline literally from where you're standing, first off, it's a bunch of, it doesn't look good. This is really gonna beautify the entire property, make that whole beachfront area look better. But if you actually stay on the sightline and look down the shore, you can actually see just on a couple houses where a number of houses obviously have palm trees and other things like of a similar nature that have been planted. So it's very common right in that area and would be fitting with other homes.
Chairman, I'll make a motion if you're ready.
Let's take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve CUP two four dash ten as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Next, we have ZM dash two four dash two three, two two eight zero, Demery Road, St. Simon's Island rezon. Consideration of a change of zoning request for approximately one point two acre property from medium residential MR to local commercial LC to allow commercial uses. Property is located at twenty-two eighty Demery Road, St. Simon's Island, parcel zero four dash one three six three six. James A. Bishop, Bishop Law Firm, agent for twenty-two eighty Demery Road, LLC, owner. And this item was deferred from our December eighteenth meeting.
Yes, sir. So this is ZM twenty-four twenty-three. And as the chairman stated, this item was originally scheduled for a public hearing on December eighteenth. There was an error in the noticing, and so we have re-noticed the entire application for tonight's meeting. That's why we do have the special called meeting tonight was in order to be able to hear any applications that we had coming in. And so this is a, reason of this property is currently zoned medium residential, and they are proposing to rezone it to local commercial. And they haven't specified, at this time, they haven't specified to the county exactly what they do plan to do on the property. They would like to have it open to commercial uses, but they have not stated specifically what kind of commercial use they plan for the property at, at this point in time. So just a little background on the difference of the zoning. So the medium residential zoning is kind of our middle, middle density residential zoning. So it allows sixteen units per acre, and it could be one-family duplex, multi-family. So you could see townhouses or apartments, you know, multiple levels, you know, on an MR zone property. There is a forty-five foot height limit in the MR zoning district. And this particular lot does have some marsh that comes into it. And so there is one point zero two three upland acres. So that's really just the, that is the developable area is the one point zero two three. So there potentially could be sixteen units, and that's not taking into account, you know, parking and roadways, but just based on just the density of the developable acres. And then the local commercial zoning that they are looking to rezone to does allow a variety of commercial uses. It is a little bit more of a, I guess, a lighter commercial zone. So like, it's a thirty-five foot height limit. We do allow restaurants, retail, office, but, you know, something that you might see in a freeway commercial, like a travel plaza or a hotel, those kind of things are not allowed in, in local commercial. So that's what they're proposing to do. And then this is the, the property on Demery where the star is located. So you can see basically to the east of the property, there is other local commercial zoning. This is where the Waffle House is located right here. And then there's actually some highway commercial at the roundabout with Frederica and Demery. And then to the west of the property is MR zoning, and then gets into single-family zoning. And then across the street on Demery, it's planned development, but it's commercial uses that are allowed in this area. And that's primarily, you know, what you see across the street, of course, is the commercial. And just an aerial view of the area. This is a survey of the property, and as I noted before, this is the upland, this is the marsh. So the total site is one point two four two, but that includes the marsh as well. On the bottom of the screen is Demery, just orient to, and then kind of as it gets back to the point of the triangle, this back portion is where the marsh is located. And this is their proposed plan for conventional rezones, meaning their, their rezoning to like another zoning district that's outlined in the zoning ordinance. The requirement is for a sketch plan. So this plan is not binding. They could come forward with something that looks pretty different than this when they do come to do site plan approval, because what really what we're just asking for at the rezone stage is a conceptual idea of kind of what they are planning for the property. So at this time, they've shown a parking area and a commercial building kind of on the left-hand side of the property here. And then one ingress egress onto Demery. It does actually match up with existing driveway that's across the street as well. And then the twenty twenty-three comprehensive plan does show this area as South Island. We did receive a public comment that was forwarded to the IPC, I think it was yesterday that it came in. And the, the property owner owns two lots west of this property, and they had concerns about a commercial business being on this property, particularly having a fast casual type restaurant with a drive-through, traffic concerns. That was the only written comment that we saw, but we did receive some phone calls from citizens just with some questions kind of about the history of the property and the area, and kind of informing staff as well about some historical applications that had been reviewed in the past on the app, on the property. There were some questions about, historically, there had been talk about having a residential commercial boundary right at this location. So basically, the discussion in the past had been that Waffle House would be the last commercial along Demery on that side of the street, and then the properties further west of that would be residential. From what, what we researched, we didn't find that there was anything binding on that, but it was something that in previous applications in the past that had been discussed as a, a comment and a discussion point during those applications. And these are the possible motions, and this is a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. And Mr. Jim Bishop is here representing this application tonight. Thank you.
I have a question for someone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
When was the, the Waffle House built?
So the Waffle House, I think, was nineteen, we found files from nineteen eighty-seven and nineteen ninety-seven. I think, was it ninety-seven? No.
Eighty-seven.
Oh, eighties. It was nineteen eighty-seven.
So that's when the discussions were about it being the last commercial?
Yes.
All right.
Long, that great question, long time ago.
Long time ago.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, this is, I have two questions for staff.
Okay.
First, you said sixteen units per acre, and then you said driveways, setbacks. How many units could reasonably be put on this property?
Yeah, that, that's a question I, it really depends on the design, because they, they do allow multi-levels on the site. So they could do like an apartment complex and have, you know, multiple levels as long as they don't exceed forty-five feet. I might defer the applicant on that to see if they have done a, you know, done any kind of preliminary designs just to see, you know, how many residential units could be put on this property. That is something they may have done, but I can't really speak to that because there are multiple different designs that could possibly go.
And one other question on the, the public comments. It, it didn't really say whether these people were for or against. Did they, was there any indication? I understand there were concerns, but did anybody say, I'm opposed to this?
Not really outright for or against is really just, you know, communicating that there is some history, you know, to this area and, you know, wanted to, you know, make, make sure staff was aware of that history, just kind of asking some questions about it. But it wasn't a specific, you know, for or against.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
I have one question, Stephanie. On, this is something I'd heard over the years with regards to a restaurant being built on that property. I don't know if there's any validity to that or not, but this email that I printed a copy out, I guess, from yesterday from Mr. Baloo, it references a Zaxby's. That's old news. Is that correct or do you?
That, yeah, my understanding is in twenty-ten, when there was another application on this site, it was planned to be a Zaxby's restaurant at that point in time. As I mentioned, applicants have not stated what they plan to do right now, but they have not said it's, that it's gonna be a Zaxby's.
Okay, thank you.
Probably before Gulliver was built too.
Any further questions for staff?
Yeah, I'm sorry. There was an additional, yeah, it was also sent to the Island's Planning Commission. My apologies. There was a letter of support from Lance Tolan, who owns the property immediately to the west. That's, that's also zoned MR, and he's planning to do townhomes on that property. But that was a letter supporting this rezone.
Are they planning to do that townhome development directly to, I guess, to the west? Is that still happening? Have they started that process already?
Yeah, yeah, currently it is underway, and that, the townhome project is, is the site right here. So prior, I don't know if there were two single family, I know there was one single-family home. I don't know if there were two single-family homes that were on this.
Duplex, and they're supposed to put fifteen townhomes in there or something like that?
I don't think the total ended up being that, that much. I will have to double check to see. I can't remember offhand exactly how many numbers or what the number was, the total.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Did, did you hear any opposition from the other neighbor, Waffle House?
No, not to my knowledge. We have not seen anything from them.
Thank you.
Did you have other questions?
Could you explain a little bit more about the, when you said in the past, like, there had been like the buffer, that kind of ending that commercial development at Waffle House? What were the issues or ramifications with that that made it binding or not?
Sure. Yeah, so the discussion in the past had been, and this was, you know, kind of starting back in the late eighties. You can see where the star is located, where it says MR. So the property to the right that's zoned local commercial, that's where the Waffle House is. And the discussion was that this was really gonna be really the dividing line, and that there really wouldn't be any more commercial really west of there. And so, you know, the question that's been brought up here is, okay, this is zoned residential. They're planning to, you know, rezone to a commercial. You know, is that, how, how has that past discussion impact, you know, impact this decision? And, you know, from what we have found there, I mean, what could be binding would be like a deed restriction on the property or, you know, an actual, you know, language in our zoning ordinance that basically draws like an overlay of like, this is the only location you can have commercial or if it's zoned differently. And that's not something we have found in any of our research. So that's why, you know, today, it's, it's up to the decision of, you know, the Planning Commission as a recommending body, and then the Board of Commissioners making that decision on whether they feel like commercials appropriate at this location or not.
Stephanie, just to clarify, that understanding was made with the owners of the Waffle House property, correct?
That's my understanding, right, that that, that discussion started with the actual Waffle House development.
So they couldn't encumber this property?
That's correct, right.
Thank you.
And I'm not sure if this is right for you, Stephanie, but looking at the minutes from, yes, last month's meeting, it was mentioned something of a good transition usage. Can you explain a little bit what that means?
Sure. Yeah, I think some of the, you know, kind of planning principles are, you know, the best practices are kind of transitional zoning. And so we, we do, you know, see that, not everywhere in the county, but a lot of places in the county, we kind of see this transition. So you can, you can see, actually, this is a pretty good example of it here. So, you know, so here at this intersection, you've got highway commercial. And highway commercial is one of our more intense commercial zoning districts. And then as you start to kind of get away from that, you have higher intensity commercial node. It starts to get kind of lighter in intensity, lighter in uses. And so what you start to see is you've got highway commercial, which is kind of this, kind of pinkish color. And then next is you have local commercial, which doesn't have as many uses as highway commercial. There's more restrictions on it. And then you go to kind of a higher density residential zone, which could be GR, MR, or HR. And then you go to kind of a higher density residential zone, which could be GR, MR, HR, some of our higher density ones. And then from there, it goes to single-family residential, where only a single-family home, you know, can be allowed. And so the idea is to, is to kind of, you know, some of it has to do with like walkability of a neighborhood, and, you know, higher density can, you know, walk to commercial easily, but then the lower density of, you know, single-family home, you know, having them have a little more separation from maybe noise and light and the impacts that can come from commercial. So that was really, you know, kind of what has been talked about, is like, hey, this transition was really supposed to be, you know, at the Waffle House, and then western was what was, had been previously talked about in the past.
Thank you. Stephanie, what are the buffer requirements for local commercial?
So if, so if this is rezoned to local commercial, they would be required to have, I'll get to the site plan. Like if this is their site plan, they do end up submitting, they are required to have a type E buffer, which is a ten-foot landscape buffer along Demery. And then anything that the butts are residential, they would need a type A buffer, which is twelve feet with a fence or twenty feet of landscaping, but most developers tend to do the twelve foot with the six-foot-high privacy fence. And so that's what you would see along this side here. And then the type E would be along the bottom. And because this borders commercial on this side, then it would not need to have any buffers.
Okay.
And there's, and the tree ordinance would also apply to this property as well.
Any further questions for staff?
Yeah, I got one more, I guess. What does the future land use map show for this lot?
So we have the character area map now, so.
And that's, this is, the flum's been replaced with this?
That's right, yeah. There's no more flum. Just a character area is what we have now. So the character area tends to be a little more broad, so the future land use map was a little bit more parcel-specific. So this is kind of more of a broad brush of, these are generally what we'd like to see here. So it is South Island, and honestly, it's a mix of different uses that are allowed there. But that kind of pinky, pink color is South Island.
Got it.
So you can see how it kind of extends, you know, north and south.
Looks like it was designated mixed use in the flum, I guess, previously. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
In terms of traffic studies, just going back, you gave us a history of the applications, I guess, prior to this one. I guess without knowing, I want to give the courtesy of the applicant to kind of discuss it a little bit more, but is there a concern for traffic? I mean, it said we were, I think, graded a D back in 2010 versus that traffic back then, and I know traffic patterns have increased severely since then, so is there any update on that?
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely, you know, consideration, and that's, I think, a good question for the commission to evaluate. When they do look, when the commission does look at a rezon application, you know, some of the standards of evaluation that you would look at to determine if you're going to recommend approval or denial is impacts on the transportation system, on traffic, you know, how it impacts surrounding areas. They have not submitted a traffic study at this time for this, for this application. County staff doesn't always, doesn't really request traffic studies as much with rezones. I mean, sometimes there, there is, there wasn't one that was requested by county staff at this stage, but future stages is where we really, our engineers really evaluate the traffic. So at site plan and then the civil plans is really when they're looking at, okay, where is the, what is the actual use that's going to be going on here? Is it, you know, a restaurant that has a drive-through or is it retail? That's when they really will evaluate that, and our county engineers may request a traffic study at that time. So that's kind of more the typical kind of administrative process. But at the commission level, I mean, those are all concerns that you all are looking at with the rezon. So if you do look at an application and you have questions about traffic that aren't answered, you know, that's something you could be requesting, you know, of the applicant is to submit a traffic study.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward and speak?
Good evening, and my name is Jim Bishop. Got lots of members in this room, as you might imagine. I represent Brad Piazza and Bodart, who are here tonight, and who are the applicants for this. I have, we've looked at this and studied this pretty extensively. We reached out to a neighbor, Lance Tolan, who's also a client of mine, by the way, and said, "You would probably be the most affected by this, so come on in." So we came into my office, and we sat down and we talked about it. He said, "I'm good with it, and you feel free to report that and also to state for the record my," and we have, I think you, Stephanie, you've got the record or the statement for the record, if you'd like to put that in there. So anyway, Brad Piazza, Bodart are here, longstanding businessmen with lots going on in our community, and have all the respect in the world for responsible development, and are here to answer any questions that you all may have. As long as Gary Neville is there, Gary is over here. Dan's usually here with me, but he's not tonight. I don't think we need Dan yet, but we may. So in the event that you all have any questions you'd like to ask these guys, you know, who are the owners and been responsible developers here in our community for a long time, I'm certain they'd be happy to answer.
I have one. There's no immediate plans to develop, there's no, you're not rezoning with a certain plan in mind?
We know, we don't.
Right.
We don't have a user for the property yet, and we would use it based on what the zoning requirements say. We can use it for, it's, you know, kind of a work in progress at the moment to decide. And we got to be, we're mindful of the traffic issues, you know, I go over and, not every day, but a lot. And I remember years ago, when, you know, that road was supposed to be four-lane, you know, we, you know, lots happened in a long time, hadn't been done yet, I don't suspect it's going to be done in our lifetime. I wish it were, but it is what it is.
Has this property always been vacant, to your knowledge?
My big pardon?
Has this property always been vacant?
You know, I think so. Best, best we can tell, I think it's just been vacant, and they're just, just, you know, waiting to be, there's not a lot of properties around to be developed that's still vacant, you know, but that property's been there for even, people go by, they just, you know, they really kind of fly by there, if you know, above for the roundabouts, there's no telling what would happen. But people in the, for instance, the yellow sign, the zoning sign. We got, somebody, somebody said, "The zoning sign's not there." So we went, I went out there and looked, and it was pushed over, so you couldn't see it. So I put it back, and it was there, took pictures of it and sent it in, so that, and that thing is still there, by the way. I don't know if anybody pays any attention to it, but it's there.
I'm going to cut the grass more often.
Yeah. Yeah.
I've got a question, so I know that you don't have a specific plan in mind for what businesses would go in there, but can you give us a little insight as to what you're, what you're thinking? Is it mixed use, office, restaurant, and if it's a restaurant, is it?
You know, it could, it could be, it could be a combination. I think that we're going to test the market, again, they don't have any plans at the moment. We'll just see what the market shows, that it might be the most acceptable use for the, for the property. Bearing in mind that, I think anybody that's going to put something there is going to want to understand, you know, what are my opportunities to make a living by putting a business there? And I, they're going to be careful to think about that as well, as I would be. So it's, you know, you're going to kind of go in and go in and go in and go in, it's all of it. We, by the way, way back, we represented the guy that had the Zaxby's restaurant, Lindsey Cordell was his name. I told, I told Lindsey Cordell, I said, "This will never happen, this won't happen." And, but he's a, you know, he was a businessman, he wanted to test waters, and he did, didn't work. Shouldn't have worked, really. Anyway, these guys are happy to answer questions or I'll find some money if I can.
So this PD text was never approved? The Cordell property PD text was never approved?
You know, I know, I know, Marty, I don't think it was, Gary? Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think it was. Let me, that thing got nowhere. And I, you know, he's, he's still around, I'm not sure, I think he still owns the Zaxby's restaurant here, but he had a lot of, and I'm not sure what ever happened to all of that.
Thank you.
I have one question, actually, that arose from looking at their prior plans with the potential Zaxby's. So one thing that I did like about it, just with it being in this commercial area, I actually was pausing yesterday to look at it, and then someone kind of came at me and forced me to go back on the right lane when you're in the middle turn lane, or what people call the chicken lane. And so it made me think that one thing I actually really did like from kind of their overall plans where it looked like they were going to create kind of what they did on the opposite side with the right turn lane. They were going to use the entrance to have more of a, like, slow turn in and out, which might be something that would be, like, better situated with like a separate ingress and egress driveway. Is that something that y'all thought about? Because the, I think, like, the way this drawing is, it almost looks like the quick transition into it could be problematic with the traffic, like the bottlenecking would be the biggest thing, I think. Because once you're in there, there's, it looks like there's going to be plenty of parking and no issue for that.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think we've thought about that, y'all, anybody that thought about it, I don't think so. I mean, you got to, you got to be so careful. I rode a bit, I've been over several times, and I rode the, people fly, they literally fly. If you go from one lane to the next, turn signal just as a beginning part of all that. You have to watch to make, make sure some, Marty was with me today, and she said, "You almost got us killed." Well, it was, you know, it was nip and tug there for a while, just defensive driving, unfortunately. Have a question, anyone else?
Yes, is there any way you can get a sense, like, of your overall vision? I mean, I know you haven't pinpointed what you want to do, but I just kind of have some concerns about rezoning this to commercial without knowing a little bit more. Just without, even the public, without them knowing a little bit more about it, just traffic to other concerns. Just, is there a vision that you have, that you said you want to be responsible development?
The, you know, if you were here, and I was there, you know, let's say, I've got a list of potential uses here, and I'm going to test the market, and I'd like to get in the marketplace to see what is going to be best suited and used. Because usually, this property is not going to spend a lot of money to develop a piece of property unless he's going to get a return on his investment. So that's, you know, that's, that's where we're going with that, just to check and see.
Is there, was there any consideration of doing something in its current, with its current use of zoning?
Like?
I guess, I mean, townhouses or anything like that, is there any?
No, no, we, yeah, we, we've also checked the market with that. There, there are lots of homes and more homes, and I think that had the traffic associated with that, it would be worse. At least that's what our thoughts have been about more homes, but there's a bunch of homes. If you go and ride up and down, lots of housing going on in Glen County, I realize that, but I rode back in there today, and there's houses on top of houses on top of houses. And that, and that's more traffic, and more traffic, and more traffic.
And you mentioned that you had spoken with Mr. Tolan, the, at the property next door. Have you reached out to any of the other communities next door for their input or?
No, the one most directly affected was him. And that's the one, and he, you know, who knows? But in my opinion, if anybody were going to object to this, it'd be him. Anyway, but the signs have been out there. I put it up myself, you know, so I can tell you, the sign's been there to make sure that everybody knew it was going to be there. And anyway.
And this might be for Stephanie, the signs were there for how long, it was around December?
About fifteen days.
Was that around Christmas time? Okay, so right around the Christmas holidays, okay. Just a little of a concern to make sure that, you know, again, the community knows, is well-informed about it, but, thank you.
Um, I have another question, so, I mean, I know that, you know, both of, everybody up there lives here and, you know, has an investment in this community. Is there anything that you could rule out as far as the development goes commercially for that? Can you rule out a Zaxby's?
There you go. There you go, no Zaxby's, won't be there, won't happen.
But I mean, you're leaning less in like the Zaxby's.
Yeah, yeah, let me, yeah, yeah.
Cheap filet type situation to something more local.
I recently was involved in another matter here where we have specific prohibition and a specific prohibition that worked in favor of my clients. Didn't work, you know, it just didn't work for some reason. And, but they've looked at it carefully, but if you looked on the potential list here, I think there's, there's a lot of stuff that's on their prospective uses of the property. But again, it's basic economics, you know, you got to get a return on the investment. It's not going to be inexpensive to develop that piece of property.
Of course not.
Yeah, so I would think that whoever's going to do it is going to be careful about it, and my clients can be careful about it as well.
If we could back up a second, I have another question for Stephanie, please.
Sure, Stephanie.
I should have asked this a little while ago, but when you were going through the presentation, you said that forty-five feet is the maximum height for the medium residential and thirty-five feet for commercial.
Yes, sir, for local commercial.
So if it's, if it were to stay medium residential, it could be how many stories?
So forty-five, and they could do three, for sure.
And, and commercial would be two?
Most likely, yeah, thirty-five feet, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Let me ask a question. Don't we still have to do site plan, really?
Yes, sir, yes, I can. Of course, I mean, we know you will get a site plan.
None of the mighty that will.
Yeah, I think that just the intention of knowing that y'all would be going one way that's a little bit more community-oriented versus, you know, Zaxby's is important in the decision process.
Any other questions?
I don't have any, I'm good.
Thank you. No further questions? Is there anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of the project, that's for the project?
Just to play a question, are you in the public hearing portion yet, or still with the applicant questions?
Just the applicant, I was opening up the.
Public hearing, yeah, public hearing.
Yeah, we have a public hearing.
Opening the public hearing, my apologies.
I can do it here, or I can do it at the public hearing portion, either way. Anyway, my name is Gary Neville, I live at 204 Stillwater Drive, Brunswick, Georgia, not St. Simon's. So, but anyway, Michael, you talked about the future land use map, this is neighborhood commercial in there, and that whole area is neighborhood commercial right now. Things change, we see a lot of rezoning, like on 341, people won't go in from commercial, or excuse me, residential to commercial, and that's a four-lane, five-lane road out there. And like I said, things change, they come along. Me personally, I don't think I'd want to have a residence in this location. If you look at it with the restaurants and the businesses that are all around it, definitely a commercial corridor right adjacent to it on that, so. But you talked about building heights out there, it's a X-zone and also an AE8, and the land in the back is about a four-foot elevation, so you're going to have to come up four or five feet right there. Would you get two full stories, probably not in the back, possibly in the front on that, so, as far as development goes. But me personally, I think a commercial use in this area is a fit with what's already there. So, be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on behalf of the applicant that is for the project? Anyone like to speak that's against the project?
Good evening, y'all, my name is Jim Bonds, and I own the Starbucks.
Good evening, y'all, my name is Jim Bonds and I own the Starbucks across the street on Demery Road. And I'm against it on a couple counts. Primarily the traffic, you know, the other day I'm going down Demery Road and there's a couple kids leaving Frederick Academy. And they're walking and they're going about as fast as I am down at Demery. I mean, it, it's, it's stop and go all the way. This side, if it is changed to commercial, I would want it and they would want it, I imagine, to be the highest and best use, which would bring in the most people or the most dollars, and I believe that would be a restaurant. And again, you know, there's, there's that congestion aspect to it. When I bought the property where the Del Taco is, I bought it as a Del Taco back in the day. It was, it was commercial and I paid commercial prices. Recently I have expanded over at our mini storage and that was zone future commercial and it, it fit in with the plans. This is owned medium residential. I don't believe you could compare the amount of traffic that you would have if you, if you made that condos compared to what you would have if you made it a restaurant around lunchtime and dinnertime when people are going to restaurants. So that's, I, I, you, you can look over at the Starbucks, you know, you know, when are they busy? You know, they're busy in the morning, they're still busy at two or three in the afternoon. You look at McDonald's and, and Souchero's, you know, when are they busy? You know, it's, it's lunchtime again. And highest and best use for that property, I think would probably be a restaurant, you know, and it would be, again, something pulling in a lot of traffic to that spot where it is congested. I remember when, back in the day, when the Waffle House went in and there's quite a bit of talk on that. I didn't get up and speak, but I believe it was a county commission meeting and, and there was some back and forth and an agreement at the time, well, this is going to be the end of it, this is the demarcation. Everything to the west of this line is going to be residential. And those people have come and gone, it's been a long time ago. Now, you know, we look in the history of it and nothing's marked down on the map and I understand that probably. Wouldn't have done that myself if I were, you know, working, planning and zoning. That was the argument at the time. And then I guess Zaxby's came or someone else came, I remember years ago, and trying to rezone it again. And maybe memories were a little clear or whatever, you know, at that time, it didn't go through as well. So, it is just an example of that commercial creep. I don't think you can, I, I, I can't imagine that if you, if you allowed that, you would have less traffic at this hours of peak congestion than if it was a residential property.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
First of all, I apologize, I've been in and out and rushing here from work, from Jack, so I've kind of missed a lot of it, tried to watch it on YouTube. But I just want to say that.
If you state your name, please.
I'm sorry, Avis, my name is Avis Wilson and I live in that area. And I just want to reiterate a point that nobody made about the community. I, I do understand that the gentleman right next to it probably has more of an interest in what goes on there, but that area is a community, Utown is a community. And I really feel that, that we need to do our due diligence and make sure that everyone is aware. I know the sign was there, I did see it, it was there, I took a picture of it. But I believe that everyone in that community needs to be aware of the meeting and what the possibilities are. We're not sure what it is or what, what, you know, we know it's not going to be Zaxby's, but I think they need to have a, a better idea of what's going to happen and they should be aware and they should have an opportunity to come to say yes or no, and that is all I have. I'm not opposed, yay or nay right now, I do want to know what's there, but I have a concern about the traffic, it's horrendous. And I've, you know, been there all my life, left school, came back and it's really, really not the best, but we know things happen. But I think everyone should have an opportunity. I didn't get a letter, I didn't know what it was about, I looked it up, but I think that everyone in that neighborhood needs to get something in writing regarding that, if that's possible, what the plans are. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll close the public comment now. Any discussion among the commissioners?
I've got some questions for staff, if I may.
Certainly.
So Commissioner Odette's question about, oh no, so I don't know your name yet. What's your name?
Courtney.
Courtney. Courtney's question about the D cell lane that was shown on the original drawing. At site plan approval in civil, would, would staff require that D cell lane depending on potential traffic flow of a new development?
They could require it, I can't say right now whether they definitely would or not.
That's, that's when it would be decided if it's required or not.
That's right, yeah, when they submit for the site plan, they'll, our county engineers will review and determine at that time.
Okay, and then how, what's the radius for letters sent to owners on rezonings?
Sure, so the requirement is two hundred feet from the property boundaries. So, and then we send those letters also at least fifteen days or more before the date of the public hearing.
And it's been in the paper for two months now, I guess, right?
Yeah, originally, actually, it was noticed for the summer eighteenth in the paper and then we noticed it again at the end of, yeah, I think it was December twentieth was when that notice was in the paper.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chairman, could, I would question, could we get Mr. Neville back up to the microphone, please? Gary, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you've served on the Mainland Planning Commission for a number of years. My question is about the difference between traffic generated by commercial and traffic generated by residential. Nobody's going to drive out of their way to come to a business that's not near where they live. Doesn't residential property generally generate more traffic? I know this is just an opinion I'm asking you for, but does it, doesn't residential property use generate more traffic than commercial?
I would have to probably, well, you're talking like restaurants and things like that, obviously there's some peak hours. Overall, I would say the residential would probably be less during the day completely, you know, people coming and going. But like I said, the restaurants, I've been to Chick-fil-A over there and Starbucks during peak hours and yeah, you wait in line for some time. It's like that on the mainland now too, over by Home Depot, it's quite a.
But I, I think with that, those are people that are probably driving by that Chick-fil-A anyway.
Coming from the interstate.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, yeah, I don't think they're, and I guess what brings this to mind is some years ago, Don Gentile wanted to put a grocery store in behind Benny's Red Barn.
Yep.
And people were talking about it would bring traffic, and this is just my opinion. Nobody's going to drive from the south end to St. Simon's past Windixie and Harris Theater to go to a grocery store on the north end. But yet, there's a lot of houses back up and down, both north and south Harrington. And that's brought a lot of traffic to that end of the island. It was the, it was the residential that brought the traffic. And, you know, the, obviously the grocery store never opened, but I'm, I'm thinking that if they put however many townhouses on this property, whatever they can put under the medium residential, those are going to be people, they're going to come and stay and they'll be going every day in and out, whatever, two, two vehicles per unit. So, I, I just don't know how much rezoning this to commercial, I don't know how detrimental that's going to be to traffic. It's just, just an opinion.
So you had twelve units there and I'm not sure what the daily traffic, I think they talk about six or seven ADT per residential units, all that, but like I said, if, if it was a restaurant, yeah, it'd be busy, commercial still. But overall, I think the, as far as residential goes, as far as the overall daily traffic would probably be less than commercial. And you talked about the Publix, I think it was, that they were looking at trying to put behind where Fifty Oaks is right now.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
On that, and I know that they've had other rezonings on the north end, all the way up, all the way at the north end. They were wanting to put, I think, a service station and a small store in there. And I always thought, well, that'd be good for all the residents up there because they wouldn't have to drive all the way to the south end. All the construction that goes on up there, all those people come south to use restaurants and all. And actually, that probably might have generated less traffic if they'd approved something up there like that. This is not quite the same thing, but like I said, I believe the residential probably would be less.
Well, then, then there's also the concern, I don't mean to dredge this up, but there's also the fact that if it was, they did build townhouses in there, who's to say that they don't get turned into short-term rental units and next thing you know, you got golf carts and sixteen-year-old kids trying to turn left onto Demery Road. Anyway, just all opinion, thank you.
Me personally, I wouldn't want to have a residential house there, so.
Not next to a restaurant that's open twenty-four hours a day.
Yeah, and I started on the planning commission back in oh-two and that's when they had both mainland and island together. I think it was a couple of years after that, they finally separated it, so, but have not been on the whole time. Yes, I currently serve also on the mainland, so.
I, I just knew you had expertise in that area, so, thank you.
All right, and thank you all for your service.
That's all I got.
Stephanie, Mr. Torres had mentioned something about the notice or the requirement for notice being two hundred feet. Just really just wanting to do our due diligence as one of the citizens had just mentioned. If notice were, could notice be sent out to the other neighborhoods or is that something we could do just to get more feedback? Cause again, this has kind of been a, I feel like a historical issue and I would just hate to do something without having all the information for, again, I'm not waiting one way or the other, but I just feel as though that if that is a concern, that's something that we should maybe consider. And I don't know how long that would look like, if we can do that, is that something this body could do?
Yeah, I mean, the, the legal requirement is, is, is within two hundred feet and, you know, fifteen days prior. I mean, there could be additional notice that is given. I mean, that's something I think the, you know, commission could ask us to do, it'd be what we kind of consider courtesy notice, so we can expand that notice to some degree. And I'm not sure that the person who stated they did not get a notice, I don't, I don't know if they're within the two hundred feet or just outside of it. But we can definitely, you check our list and make sure that individual was on, was on our list to get the notice if they are within the two hundred feet.
Stephanie, would the same notice requirements apply to the commissioners? To the board of commissioners?
Are the noticing requirements?
Well, if, I'm just saying, if it was approved and went on to them, would there be the same notice requirements?
There is, yeah, so it's actually the same, same notice requirements for the planning commission hearing as well as the board of commissioners hearing. A lot of times we will do a, kind of a dual notice, so we'll send a letter out stating this application has a hearing on January eighth and it also has a hearing on January eighteenth at the board of commissioners level. So that is, you know, if the IPC were to take, take action tonight, we would forward it to the BOC for their January sixteenth meeting. And then, so we send that notice out and we also include, you know, both, both hearing dates and the notice that's in the paper and also on the sign. So we just try to, try to do that together and I feel like if an applicant or a neighbor, you know, receives that notice, they have both dates already right in front of them. They don't have to search for a second piece of paper. But if, but if, like say if the IPC defers the agenda item tonight, then we would cancel that January sixteenth hearing because we can't have a go to the board until the IPC takes action on it.
Okay.
Yeah, so the noticing has been done already on this, but as I mentioned, if there's an additional courtesy notice that IPC would like us to do, you know, that's something we can send out.
Would that also apply if the IPC approved it tonight? Would that also be a condition of the?
To do the courtesy notice before the board meeting? Yeah, and that could be something that you all, you know, want us to do and we can definitely send that out. It'd be, at this point, what, about two weeks, no, I guess it's about a week and a half before the, the BOC meeting would be on the sixteenth. So we, so there's time to send out a mailer to everybody and they would have at least, at least a week or a few days to review it. I think we'd want to, you know, know exactly what, what that parameter looks like, because of course there, there is a cost, you know, both staff time as well as cost of mailing those letters, so, you know, so if it's three hundred feet instead of two hundred feet, you know, just if there's a parameter that we can go off of.
And I'm, I'm not looking to kick the can down the road, I'm just thinking it may give an opportunity to get more people, give them more notice and, and they could show up for the board of commissioners meeting and, just a, just a thought.
Mr. Chair, could I ask the attorney a question? Would, um, would there be any concern about setting a precedent for expanding our noticing for one project that someone else could use against us in the future?
I wouldn't think that it would be anything presidential that would be used against you in the future. I think people could maybe more apt to ask for in the future, but there wouldn't, I, I don't see a downside necessarily. I think as Stephanie said, there are minimums that you have to do and that's the two hundred feet. But I, I think you have the discretion to ask staff to go beyond that.
Thank you. Yes. With, with, with all due respect, thank you all for the service you've rendered, but if, if any of you all were over here where I am or where they are, you know, sometimes you might get the impression that, that we, these are responsible property owners and landowners are trying to dot the i's and cross the t's in every respect. And we have done everything we can do to, 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 to do, to do that. But I'm maybe getting the impression of what we're trying to do is, again, give them kind of a burden that most people don't have. And in, in terms of presidential value, you've got your own lawyer there, but, you know, I just think that's something, that's something to think about. But again, these guys, responsible property owners, owners of property in Glen County, and they have done everything that we believe is, is reasonable, including meeting with everybody that we could meet with to make sure that we, again, adhere to every responsible requirement that you have. Anyway, thank you very much.
Just one more.
Excuse me.
Mr. Bishop, yeah, environmental concerns, it's right there on the marsh, in your vision that you guys are working out, is that something that you have considered as well, just being so close to the marsh? And I guess just my concern is the overdevelopment of that part of the island. That's kind of like a natural buffer already right there, but is the environment and whatever you're planning on doing something that y'all have considered?
Dan Musa? Dan, Dan Musa is, do y'all know Dan? Dan, Dan is the world's best environmental consultant, so thank you for asking that question, Dan. We didn't ask Dan to be here tonight, but I'm glad he's here, so thank you, Dan.
If you look on the site plan there, you see the marsh in the back. The marsh has a twenty-five foot state erosion control buffer that has to remain in an undisturbed state unless they apply it for a variance to do any work in there. So, they cannot do anything in that buffer, so, and then there's storm water has to be contained through county regulations, cannot be directly discharged into the marsh.
Is that a concern for runoff into other properties or is that something that has been anticipated?
No, that, that's beyond my area of expertise, but I know for a fact that they have to contain their storm water. Pre and post-condition runoff has to remain the same.
Thank you.
And if I might add one more comment about the traffic. I live in a small town on the south end of Savannah, we have a little commercial center, very similar to this, everything to the south to Coffee Bluff is residential and every time there's going to change in that area, people get concerned. People are already coming there, already coming there for lunch. And in this particular scenario, you're just offering, if it was a restaurant, offering one more choice. They're coming there anyways, instead of going across the street, maybe today they try this restaurant, if in fact it turned out to be a restaurant. So, in these cases, it's not that it's generating, bringing in an extra two hundred and fifty cars a day at lunchtime. It's just another option for the people that are already coming to that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to make a comment if I can. Um, so I was just going to say, actually, a little bit to Mr. Bishop's point. So, um, I think I was meeting with Stephanie yesterday, and I think there was just a small, which happens, county error, which is why it didn't get presented in December. So, actually, they're already at a whole pushback over an entire month, and that falls on us. I mean, and I, I say, I mean, the county, and that's not their fault. Um, and there was noticing going on to be prepared for the last meeting. So, actually, there's, some of this has been a good bit of double noticing and given more time. Um, so when we go ahead and talk about adding more noticing requirements, they've already been pushed back an entire month with extra noticing for that, and that's not the applicant's fault. Um, that's our fault, um, just as a county. Um, but I was going to say one thing, and I think this is kind of what you were pointing to, um, because I've, um, thought a lot about this project, a lot, and I've actually talked to some people who are just very anti-development, who I thought would be, um, extremely against the project, who were, um, actually for it. And, uh, I think the biggest thing to consider, if you think about the island as a whole, um, Glen County as a whole, what happens if we add more houses? And let's just say this gets max developed into sixteen condos, then that's what someone decides as a developer residential is the best use. We're not just going to be adding sixteen people, we're probably going to be adding thirty-two, maybe they have kids, probably thirty-two cars is what we're going to get, maybe forty-some people. That's going to be forty-some people that move here and take those, um, condos. So, that's going to be forty more people, they're going to be on the island all the time. They're going to go to the grocery store all the time, or local banks all the time, and every restaurant all the time. So, that's permanently that many more cars every day around the island, or schools, all of that. Um, most of the people for lunch, I mean, everybody has other jobs and is busy. Um, if you're on the island, you're going to lunch on the island. If you're running errands over here, and even if you're on the island, you're going to be eating, you know, lunch at one of our great restaurants downtown. So, a lot of the, while there may be more cars definitely in and out than, um, it would be right now, which is completely empty, um, I actually do not believe that this is going to bring more people, um, to the island long-term and the whole. And a lot of people, this is a big point, you know, in the past year, um, one of the biggest complaints I hear is the total volume of traffic, and that's especially the north end, like you were talking about the north end with grocery store and everything. The reason why there's so much more traffic on the north end, there's so many more homes. There's no more businesses up there. I mean, Forbes Farm operates on a Friday night or Saturday night wedding, that's not the traffic. It's all the homes being built. Um, so that actually, I think, overall would bring more traffic to the island, which is, I thought a lot about this project. Um, that is less popular on the whole, um, for the islands. And, um, while this is a mixed-use corridor, when you look at the plan as a whole, so, um, what Stephanie was saying earlier, so the classic development theory is you're going to go from the commercial and step it down slowly to the single-use, uh, sorry, single-home residential area. So, um, Lance Toland's project actually really helps fulfill that vision of the slow transition. And it's actually, it's almost the most perfect time a project like this could be brought forward because he's actually willing to let his property be the buffer in between this commercial building going down to residential. And, um, so he's going to build those townhouses, and then there's, we already see that, then there's the huge, it's a really big duplex with two homes, I think I've seen it's like the beige stocko, and then it goes all the way down into residential. So, the other thing that creates is all of these projects are already set. And then we go further down to that, to homes that have already existed. There is no more potential for this to become, um, commercial. There's not three empty lots next door that we think we're going to keep hearing, are going to become commercial. And I'm also the opinion that if Lance is investing this huge project right now with brand-new homes, those things aren't going to be torn down anytime soon within fifty years. So, while this would be extending the commercial zone by one, one specific lot, um, it actually fulfills the ideal, um, transition zoning-wise. And the other thing I was going to say, um, is that this property's been sitting here for a long time and sold and everything, and people are looking at it, and it's going to be developed one way or another, I believe, uh, in the near future. And I think, you know, really, our main decision is, is commercial or residential, what can work here. Um, but I think we really have to look at it in light of the transition with Lance's property. And, I mean, I would say there's some decent weight with the fact that he is for that project, or he was objecting as a neighbor, saying, I was developing this and was not aware of this. That would be different, but I think with him being for it, it really kind of, I would say, makes a lot more sense in that context.
I just wanted to clarify my comment and my question of staff. It was not that we place any further burden or delays on the applicant at our meeting. And I'm, I'm assuming that we were to vote to carry this on to the board of commissioners, that's where I was saying that if we could do any further notices to give the, the neighborhood an opportunity to speak, rather than delaying it now with the applicant, it sounds like they have checked the boxes. Uh, so, in other words, let's don't, don't throw anything else now. That, I just wanted to clarify that, I'm not talking about doing that as, as a motion tonight, so... Any, any other discussions among...
Make a motion if you're willing. Um, uh, I'll make a motion to approve ZM twenty-four twenty-three as presented.
A second. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, did you close the public hearing? Did you officially close it?
I did not, my apologies.
Okay, thank you.
The public hearing is now closed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Michael.
Now, would you like me to make a motion?
If you would, please.
Um, one note before I say that motion again, um, with the potential for housing in this area, sixteen units, like you said, forty-something plus people, um, there is potential for vehicular traffic, but there's also the potential for pedestrian traffic trying to cross that road, um, with, there's, there's no crosswalk there. They have to walk down to the roundabout, and, uh, I, I think that's problematic and potentially dangerous. With that said, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve ZM twenty-four twenty-three as presented.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Here's...
All those against?
All those against? Thank you. Motion is approved.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, elections are...
Oh, elections, sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, they've got moved. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And I'm going to lean on council votes. All right, with our election process.
Uh, Mr. Vice... Uh, Mr. Chair, for the election process, um, you'll start with the chair election. You can open nominations. Um, anyone on the board can nominate, or on the commission can nominate anyone else or themselves. Um, you would leave nominations open until all the nominations have been made for the chair position, and then you'd ask one more time, I think, if there were any other nominations, and then you would close that. You don't need a, a motion or a vote for that. And then, in the order that the nominations are done, you would, uh, that's how you would vote for the chair position. So, whoever's nominated first, you would say, all right, this is the candidate, all those in favor, um, and oppose and, and whatnot. And you'd go, I think, down the board.
Start with, start with the vice chair, or...
You would start with the chair.
The chair.
And then whoever the chair ends up being, they'll get the gavel, and they'll do the vice chair, um, process.
Do we have any nominations for chair?
I nominate you, Joe Nash, as chairman.
Are there any other nominations for chair?
You did such a good job.
Well, thank you. My first time, but I appreciate the support. Uh, now, do we vote on chair?
I would say, uh, I think you asked if there were any other nominations, there are none, so I think you close nominations, and you can do that as the chair.
We'll close nominations.
And then you'll vote on it.
And now we'll vote. All those in favor of Joe Nash for chair? Thank you so much. Do we have any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate, uh, Ms. Brock.
That just came out of left field.
I think it's a good, good suggestion.
Oh. Oh, God, I'm sweating, I thought it was going to be, I'll nominate Matthew.
I'll shop first.
Any other nominations?
I'll nominate myself.
There you go.
If, if that's not appropriate, I'll nominate Mr. McHale.
Which direction do I go now?
Go Bryce first.
Okay. All those in favor of Bryce as the vice chair? Can we vote for both of them?
I think once you have one, you're, you're done.
So, four, four votes for...
Four, four, and, uh, I would go and do any against?
Any, any against Bryce as the vice chair, other than herself?
I think that, that carries, uh, that's who you...
That carries?
Yep.
Congratulations, Bryce.
A nice surprise.
I'm sorry? Yes, sir, you may, Commissioner, Chairman.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
Some of you know me, some don't. Walter Rafalski, I am chairman of the commission. I want to congratulate three new ones. I don't know if you know what you've gotten into, but...
Condolences.
It's going to be fun.
Condolences, no, it's congratulations. And I really want to thank you for your service. I did this last night at mainland, too. Uh, it, it, it requires time and very little money. So, I just, just want to thank you and, and the whole commission. We welcome you and we appreciate your service.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to you as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Condolences.
Do we have a motion for...
Mr. adjourn.
Mr. adjourn.